All right. Welcome to the planning board meeting for November 13th. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Obviously, we only have one meeting this month and one meeting next month. So I would strongly recommend anybody who needs to get that in to get it in on time for the December meeting. Otherwise, you're looking at 2026. We'll start with the fill application walkover and down to the subdivision review. Waterfront Equities LLC, Library Avenue. Good evening, Mr. Yum.
Good evening. For the application, James Ben Doon, 323. The road West Hampton Beach. Oops. So at the request of the board, we had provided our proposed landscape plan, which is in front of you. And I thought it might be look too interesting to compare and contrast that plan against existing conditions at the site. And I just apologize, I only have a small number of copies. Maybe we could share.
All right, you know, I'll pass this down.
Do you have a few of these?
Okay. Hold over A, B, C. Do you want to pass this down?
Yeah.
Okay. You rolled a single, right?
Yes. Well, no, there are four different pictures there.
So why don't we get this? Is this more than you had in the record from 10 days ago? Are we adding to tonight's package?
Yes. I'm just explaining the impact of the landscape plan that we submitted.
In other words, you're not churning in documents on time?
That's true. Maybe they're early for things.
All right, well, we're going to give you consideration. Let's move forward.
Appreciate that. So anyway, I've identified here the Bennett properties, which seem to be of interest. And I took a series of four photographs, which show the existing conditions at the site. And as you can see, photo number A is towards the southwest corner of the site and shows existing conditions, some substantial trees located not on our property, but on the adjacent property. Photograph B is also a series of trees that are not on our property, but I believe on the adjacent property.
So what's the point, Jim? You're not going to put up trees?
Well, no, we are putting up trees, but the impact is on the neighbors' property per their letter, I think, is minimal. That's really what we're talking about.
Okay.
When you look at what we're proposing, we're proposing a series of trees adjacent to, in most cases, the existing very tall trees that, at least initially, will be much smaller than those tall trees. We are suggesting some trees in front of what is the exposed house shown in photograph A.
Yeah.
But that's, I think, not unusual. And the other feature is the plantings on Lot 2, which is the lot closest to the water, are set back from the property line because there's a four-foot path that goes across that end of the property. So I think we're...
Are you here to see this application? Well, here, let me give you my copies. And we certainly would like...
I need one copy for the file.
Well, we're not actually supposed to be looking at this tonight because it wasn't turned in on time. So what we're going to do is we've listened to Mr. Yum's explanation, and we've given the neighbors your...
Understood.
And we'll look at it next time.
Okay. But I just wanted to explore, what else is outstanding relative?
Well, you know, you've got the DEC, right?
Yeah, I wanted to talk about that a little bit. As the board, I'm sure, is well aware, the DEC is kind of a black hole that doesn't do anything in rapid succession. And we got the request a couple of weeks ago for an indication of that. But what I would say, what I'm wondering is perhaps we don't need any further action from the DEC. This application is effectively an extension of the approval that this board granted back in 2014.
Well, it really turned out not to effectively be that. We actually did come up with a new application, isn't that right?
There is a new application, but it is...
They're going to have to have a DEC.
Okay. Well, then, we'll have to endeavor to move in that direction.
I mean, that's my...
It could be a condition, though. I mean, I'm not... We've said you need to have a DEC stamp on it, but the same way, you have to have a Health Department stamp on a plan.
Right. But we do have a DEC stamp from 2014.
I know, but it's expired.
All this is an extension of time. If you send them $200,000 and send it back immediately.
In 12 weeks.
All I'm saying, Jim, is...
Not for an extension of time.
Okay.
If it's a condition of approval...
Well, so then you haven't actually made the application. And didn't you tell us last time that you had this?
No, I'm not involved directly with that. Chuck Bowman has been interfacing with the DEC on this very issue, attempting to get...
But didn't you say that you had this? And you were just going to get us a copy?
Did I? I said we had the Health Department. I don't recall whether I said... If I said we had the DEC, I misspoke.
Okay.
Just to be clear, this proposal did have a DEC approval in 2014. It was then extended around 2017 or 18. All they need is another extension to make it valid today. And that's just a fee and a letter of request that goes to the DEC.
Okay.
I file them weekly, and it takes days.
Okay. I will relate that to Mr. Bowman, who has been attempting to do just that for...
So maybe if they file it, then we can get it.
Perhaps.
I don't think that... That's not going to slow down a decision.
No.
Because it's...
No.
Anyway, it would be a condition of approval, that's all.
Okay. So you just want time to evaluate the landscape plan?
We specifically wrote about it in the initial secret determination on this property. There's a file about the DEC approval on this.
Yeah, but it'll be conditioned on them getting it renewed, that's all, right?
Well, I mean, we'd like to have more than, we're going to hand it to you and then not hand it to us.
When we do a conditional approval, let's assume it's a conditional approval and not a denial. So assume it's a conditional approval. You have a whole bunch of things that have to get done between that and the actual finalization of the subdivision. Things like covenants, things like any other conditions that the planners determine need to get done.
But my point is, we were told that all he had the DEC, and he had the revision of the DEC, and that all he had to do was turn it in. I think, Britton, weren't you supposed to receive that? Or was Megan supposed to receive that?
Whatever.
Okay, whatever it is, it is. And apparently, it isn't even filed.
The other problem is sometimes they, say, in this example, they had a 50-foot, they had a 50-foot non-disturbance buffer. The DEC says, well, the project that you're now doing, this extension, is a little bit greater. We'd like to see that moved to 75. That changes our map.
Yeah, but that's their problem. All I'm saying is, if you are very confident you're going to get this DEC approval, we can do it as a condition of the approval. If you don't get it, that's on them. That's not our problem. They'd have to come back and amend the map and go through all those processes. I'm just trying to make things a little easier...
I appreciate that.
...to... And I think the chances are, Britton, that nothing changed. The wetlands line didn't change. So unless the DEC regulations change between 2014 and today, which I don't think they have, it's basically a rubber stamp. My guess is, it's going to be a rubber stamp.
Okay. And it should be a short-lived process.
I wouldn't normally recommend it if it was the first time we were doing it and we didn't have, we didn't know whether the DEC was likely or not to approve it. In that case, it would be a little speculative for us to give them the subdivision approval without seeing what the DEC had to say.
Okay. Right, in any case, we're going to let the neighbors look at the documentation that was provided tonight. And we're going to have it... You're going to give a, I guess, somebody will give a copy for the record, and we'll move forward on the 11th meeting.
Okay, I can provide this copy for the record.
Thank you. Absolutely. We look forward to seeing you on that topic, Mr. Yum.
My pleasure.
Okay, Prime Storage.
Is that public here, open, by the way, Britton?
Yes.
For... So then they should, you guys should do a motion to hold over...
I need a motion to hold over the applicant for the December 11th meeting.
I make that motion?
All in favor?
That's for Waterfront Equities. Yes.
Okay, now, Prime Storage.
Good evening. Joe Nitzel from JMN Architecture, architect for the applicant. Last time that we met in front of this board, we were recommended to go in front of the Architectural Review Board to present the new design. I believe the Architectural Review Board favored the design based on their review of the drawings, as well as the memo they provided to this board.
They liked it just fine.
Great. We're happy.
So we can close this, right? Who can ever do that?
It's closed. We just would need a motion for a decision.
Where did we leave things? Did we ever approve this the last time? Is this an amendment?
To make it a three-story building instead of two-story.
Right, but what I'm asking is, did we ever previously approve it? Or is this going to be the first?
So we approved it from our resolution for a two-story building. They came back for a modification for a three-story.
Okay.
So we have to write a modification.
We just have to do a modification.
Okay, so we'll have a modification decision at our December 11th meeting.
Great.
And you don't have to, yeah.
Awesome.
You can just call the office the next day, and Megan will email you a copy.
Perfect.
Assuming it passes.
Yeah.
You don't need a motion.
Can't be too presumptuous.
I could email them a copy of the denial order.
There we go. Perfect. We'll reach out on the 12th.
Kind of keep it in suspense, you know? You can't, like, give it all away as you came.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate the good effort.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
104 West Hampton LLC, 104 Main Street.
As the board will recall, there's been some significant discussion about the parking situation at this site. And in an attempt to meet some, meet or respond to the concern, and I think, if I'm stating it correctly, the concern had, in part at least, to do with backing out of the spots into, onto the road. We came up with an alternate plan, which we submitted a week and a half ago, I think, that shows three spots that can maneuver within the parking area and get out onto the road going forward. As you recall, we currently have two spots on this project. The proposed addition requires three additional spots. This does, this plan does provide for one of those three, and so leaves us at a deficit of two. But we're hoping, since this seemed to be of great concern to, or some concern at least to the board, that you would consider this alternate plan as it at least addresses that issue.
Ron, would you like to pipe in, please?
Yeah.
We're making progress.
Well, and we recognize that issue. I don't know if we could move it back at all from the property line, but I think that would be an issue that we would need to discuss with the zoning board if and when we found ourselves in front of there. You know, we're kind of balancing interests here. And one of the expressed concerns about this plan was the fact that these cars that were parked back there would have to back into the street. I would point out that every car that parks on Main Street has to back out into that street. But this is, this is not that. So we understand what you're, what you may be saying, but so this is an attempt...
Why we love you.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. It's a little bit different.
You know, so, I mean, this speaks to the direct concern that you have. I think in all other ways, the project meets the...
I think that that's one of our concerns. And I agree with you, Jim. That is a concern that you're consistently trying to address, whether you're pushing it in or pulling it out. I don't know that that makes that concern go away. And obviously, this is going to be something that you, if and when, would have to discuss with somebody other than us.
Well, hey, Brad, can I ask you a question? Is the difference between this, let's say they... If you're asked to do a turn-down for this plan, do you know what the variances would be that would be needed?
Yes.
It would be the number of spaces plus the distance, right? The setback. And so if they're trading that for a larger variance on the number of spaces if they were to reduce the parking down to one or two, is that right?
Leave the parking as is for free parking spaces. Or they could try to, this would be two parking spaces and then a parking.
Right.
How many variances are we actually looking for? And what are they?
So I think the latest plan brought the space down to 750 square feet or less. So it's one space per 250 square feet. So now, the original plan was more than that. So now it's down to three spaces. And that's, that would be the requirement. There's two existing spaces there. I think most versions we've seen of this show adding at least one, maybe two spaces. Going back and forth on that. So this latest one adds one space, so we're still short two.
And that's the only variance that's needed?
No.
None?
Yeah, I mean...
What would also be the setback?
Would be the setback for the parking with this last iteration.
Right.
What about the setback for the building?
There's no parking variance with the setback. It's zero plot line, zero to the side, zero to the front. The rear is going to be determined to be the northern lines. A previous version had setback issues. And I don't interpret... Our B-1 code talks about articulation walkable spaces. This is not a new building. This is an addition to an existing building. So I don't have an issue with it setting back. I think this, we talked about articulation and not trying to compete with the building that was there. So to me, to set it back six feet, which is more than the five minimum, the five minimum, my estimation, my determination is for a brand-new building. This is in addition to an existing building. And there was enough discussion about the architecture and the design to merit having a setback that wasn't flush with the existing. So Ron did bring that up. We've talked about it. I don't, I don't think there's anything wrong with setting this back. I would not identify that as required variance. Unless this board said, no, we want it to be zero to five, you know, we didn't want it to be beyond the five, then prefer four. And that would be a different story. But I don't have a problem with the articulation if you think it all makes sense for the existing building and what they're proposing.
So what relief will he be seeking from the zoning board?
Right now, it's just parking.
Okay.
And it's either, what we've established is, if they go with this plan, it's either one space plus the setback...
Two spaces plus...
Two spaces plus the setback, or if they leave it as is, it's three spaces, no setback. So that's up to them on maybe, or maybe up to you on what you, from a planning standpoint, prefer. So that's what we talked about last time, which is that there is zoning jurisdiction, there's also planning jurisdiction. And you have a right to say, from a planning standpoint, you don't, you do or don't want to add an extra space here if it's going to be backing out into the thing. Although I guess, Jim, you're saying you wouldn't have to back out.
You wouldn't have to back out into the street with this plan. Some of the other plans that we looked at, we could actually get more spots, but that it would require the cars to either...
Is there, is there enough turning radius, Ron, for them to turn vehicles around? Looks...
Little cars.
My guess is, if they, half the time, they just back out because it's here.
Well, this does create a substantial...
This is a very little car.
A substantial area within which to make a K-turn or a back-and-forth or whatever before you get to the street. That was the point of this.
Don, would you care to comment?
First of all, I don't think you can compare pedestrians on Main Street to Glovers Lane pedestrians, especially in the high season. It's really, Glovers Lane is really pedestrian walk, whether we like it or not.
Right.
It's a pedestrian walk during the high season here in West Hampton Beach. Looking at this, I mean, it doesn't look like one would spend the time doing a three-way back-and-forth to go out frontwards. You're also on the line to the park, where the bocce ball courts are in the park. I'm not sure I would have, even if the BCA approved it, I don't know if I would approve it on the planning board.
Well, I think you'd have a hard time taking that position.
Okay.
If the ZBA approved it, because that's the only deviation from...
You've got to get to the ZBA.
I know, but that's, this is the only deviation from the code requirements for this site.
I just saw, I...
I don't know. Let's not go there, because the planning board does have...
True. They have a little bit...
...jurisdiction over circulation and safety and things like that, so...
And the architecture and design.
And I don't think the zoning board does, so...
True. I agree.
If there's a safety concern or a circulation problem, the zoning board may not be able to base its decision on that. I don't know.
Well, I guess the way to eliminate, I think that we've, I think that we've gone a long way in addressing the safety issue, because there's a lot of space here for cars to maneuver. But, you know, the whole other end of the spectrum is to, just to eliminate the parking altogether, or to keep the two that we have and go for the three spots that we need. And then you don't have that issue.
Is there ever an ADA requirement for this space? If you're adding one, why wouldn't you need to make the new one compliant? So how, this wouldn't work unless they widened? I don't know how they could do it.
There's no way.
The question is ADA?
If you're adding a new space, it's different if you grandfathered and you're leaving it alone. But if you're adding a new space, why wouldn't you need to add the new space as an ADA-compliant space?
Oh, handicap spot?
Yeah.
It would be access. That's the key component. If you need an ADA-compliant parking space, then we should not go there.
That's why I'm asking the question. Because you're proposing an additional space, but if the...
If you're adding a space, it should be...
Code requires that new space to be ADA-compliant. You don't have the width to do both. You don't have the width to do both. What you could do is maybe, I don't know, create what you've created as a turnaround bump out, which could result at least in an improvement of circulation, but have it as a no parking, as a no parking spot. I don't know. That's a... I don't know if that really does much. You would know, but...
I'd almost rather see no parking period.
Which we're not adverse to. I mean, we're just trying to find a solution to the problem that is presented to us. And if the issue here is the safety of backing cars into the street, then we'll be more than happy to eliminate the proposed additional parking and then go to the zoning board with three.
Spaces.
Three spaces.
From the standpoint of the way the village looks, it just, it'd be like everything would look better if there was no parking there.
Well, then we need five spaces, because then we're giving up, we can't give up the two that we already have.
I think you only have one, but it doesn't make any difference. It's grandfathered.
It's grandfathered. Whatever it is, it is.
Yeah.
Mr. Jones?
I still don't have a problem backing out into that one-way street. All the houses that are on the opposite side, they all back out into the street. And that's all of my only concern. I don't have a problem with it.
With respect to what they both said, you know, the houses up the block, they're backing out.
Some of them are. That's not necessarily true.
But the traffic, the pedestrian traffic is really not heavy up the block.
I understand.
Right? It is heavy, yeah. If you can get the approvals, I'm looking at this like Spot C is a no parking. Nobody parks there. And A and B use that as a turnaround. So that's just a...
I don't think we have any issue with that either.
Well, I'm not, you know, I'm just throwing that to the table to try to put some light on this subject.
We'd be happy to go to the zoning board with that.
And then, I don't know how everybody else feels about that, but that's, it's a possible.
Don?
I know we're comparing the homes. I think Larry brought up a good point about the homes backing out. The homes are north of the restrooms.
Right.
Okay? Most pedestrians that walk from Main Street up Glovers, there's destinations, the restrooms. The homes we're referring to are north of that building. That's what I want to say for the record.
Does anybody know we have restrooms?
Yeah, they do. They're active.
Some of them run there. Every time I go by, they're closed.
Also, you know, keep in mind that if we go, if we go back to just preserving the two grandfathered spots, even in this kind of a configuration, it's only two spots. And it's more than likely going to be, or could actually be dedicated as employees' parking. So how many times, how many times would the car come and go? Which I would think would even lesser, less lessen? You know, we're not putting 10 spots back there with 10 cars in and out all the time.
Well, are you going to make that a covenant? That'd be employee parking?
If that, yeah, I think that would be fine.
Would that count? Would that work?
Well, we have two existing spots, and I think the board could restrict it in return for...
You could do it, you could do whatever you want on that. I mean, if they're willing to covenant to it, you could designate it as for residents only.
Well, it'd have to be signed, and it, and there would have to be a covenant.
Oh, absolutely, yes. And then we could preserve the space that is C as a turnaround.
It could even, I mean, we're getting maybe a little ahead of ourselves, but if it did end up going in that direction, I might even suggest a notice covenant to the occupants to notify them that they're non-compliant parking spaces. Do that from time to time. It's just to make it clear to them that they're utilizing non-compliant spaces and need to exercise, almost...
Caution, do caution.
Caution and care.
Proceed at your own peril.
Yeah. But by narrowing it to the occupants, at least it would, you're narrowing the pool of people you need to notify. I don't know. We may be getting ahead of ourselves, since the zoning board still needs to prove it, and so do you guys.
Are we talking about the occupants for the apartment? Or are we talking about employees for the...
Well, that's what Ron was suggesting, that maybe the occupants for the apartment make more sense.
Or occupants for, you know, full-day employees theoretically. You actually leave the remaining employees there in the day, but still, you get a changeover in the early morning.
You wouldn't want to restrict either the employee or the tenant. I mean, you could have them both there.
Probably the way it's being done, it's not...
All right, so I guess we've got a... All right, so I guess we've got to, let's, let's get this to a. I guess we should forward this to the ZBA. And, I don't know, I guess we should make a copy of the minutes of this meeting in particular available to that board. And I guess the favor at this point, unless I'm mistaken, would be to have the tenants slash employees as parking restricted in this.
I'm with that.
Are you with that, too?
I'm with that, too, yeah.
Are you with that, too?
More importantly.
Are you with that?
We're fine with that.
He don't like it no matter what.
That's a loaded question.
Five minutes ago, we were talking about the employee parks there at nine o'clock, and the employee leaves there at five. Now we're talking about possibility of a tenant in the apartment going out shopping in the middle of the day.
Well, I don't know if that's true.
We don't know if that's true.
No.
But I'm just.
But how do you, how do you fence that in, where you have one and not the other? How can you do that? You can't really do that. That doesn't make sense to me.
Incapacitated tenants only.
Tenants without cars.
To be honest, if you did have a handicap tenant, you may have to provide that space to them for.
Yeah, right.
For legal reasons. I, I don't know, but that's, you kind of say that, but it could be true.
Yeah.
It came down to it.
Yeah, not.
And you are correct, the, the cars that are there now, they stay there all day. I've seen it. I walk, I'm on Main Street every day, and I walk down Glove's, I see what's going on. And that's a good thing.
But we could live with either of those or both of those limitations.
It's a perfect world.
We don't want to covenant that, though.
It's no longer a secret, either. You just send it at a public meeting.
I mean, no one's calling him and saying, you go in the restaurant, you can park in my spot.
So just to be clear for Brad, because Brad's gonna have to articulate the variances, the idea is to send them to the zoning board on, not on this plan, but on the existing parking, which is gonna trigger a three-space variance, right? Okay?
We're good with that.
And we'll, assuming Jim's the applicant, make sure that those, all these minutes go into it, so the ZBA can see that there was much discussion about adding spaces. We landed on maybe don't add spaces.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's our recommendation. Do we need to make a motion to that effect? Or are we just putting that into the record?
I don't think so.
No. Okay, so, all right, we're kicking you down the street.
All right, so we, we'll return when we have an answer from the zoning board.
Hardly wait. See you next year in a brand-new show.
Exactly. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your attention.
Thank you.
Next year is only a month and a half away.
Okay, so we have minutes from October 23rd. I need the minutes accepted as written. Motion?
I make the motion, except the minutes is written.
All right. We'd like to hear a consultation about our last meeting in 2025.
Um, it sounds like it's gonna be the, uh.
December.
The same fires. Seventeen library will come back for Beechwood discussion on the covenants that, um, what was on originally tonight. And are you believing that we will have a submission from West Hampton for an extension of plan again?
Take a look at that. You're taking bets on that?
I need a motion to close.
I might be willing to take you on that. I make the motion.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
All right. It's over.
Meeting's over?
Yes.
Yeah. Did we entertain you?